August 15th, 2017, Broken Arrow City Council Meeting to Order. We have Pastor Scott Moore to give the invocation.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you give each and every one of us here today. And Father, we thank you for these leaders, for the City Commission and the other various city leaders that are gathered here tonight to discuss and make decisions for the well-being of our community. Father, we ask that you would give everyone here a sense of the true needs of the people of our community, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. We ask that you would give confidence to do what is good and fitting for our community as well. Father, we pray for the agenda that will be set before the meeting tonight and just ask that you would give assurance that whatever is decided would benefit your will and those who live and work in our city of Broken Arrow. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Please stand and join Counselor Deborah Wimpy in the pledge.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the consent agenda. I've got four items I'd like to remove, BB, CC, DD, and EE. Are there any other items to be removed?
Which one?
CC, DD, and EE.
Move for approval of consent agenda excluding items BB, CC, DD, and EE. Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
All right, item six, consideration of items removed from consent agenda. Are there any motions?
Motion to approve items BB, CC, DD, and EE.
Second.
Motion and second having been made. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Item 7A is Presentation of the Tourism and Marketing Video Promoting Broken Arrow. Mr. Spurgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. I'm proud to let you know tonight that we will be debuting to the governing body and the community the first of three marketing videos to help promote travel and tourism in our city and our region. The remaining videos, I understand, will be completed by the end of September. As the council knows and for the benefit of those that are in attendance that will watch the council meeting on Cox Channel 24, last year, the City Council authorized the commission of a tourism asset inventory. The inventory was completed earlier this year with the results presented to the City Council and our CVB. The firm we commissioned, Berkeley Young Strategies, recommended the city develop an aggressive marketing strategy for our website, social media platforms, and traditional marketing partnerships with both the region and state tourism entities as well as with our local properties, hotels and motels that we have within the community. And some background information, I just want to talk a little bit about the impact travel and tourism has on our state and then specifically within our city. In Oklahoma, tourism and travel, that industry generates nearly $640 million a year. It is the third-largest industry in the state behind oil and gas and agriculture. And without question, tourism is a powerful economic driver, and the city, as the council is aware, needs to position our city to where we can earn a larger piece of the proverbial pie to help our hotels and motels and businesses when folks come to visit and shop, dine, and leave their money here in our city among the many businesses we have within our community. The city currently has 942 hotel rooms. La Quinta is now open, and we will have approximately 1,156 rooms once the conference center and the Hilton Garden Inn is open in just a few months. The video is an important component of this marketing strategy. It provides a tangible product that we can share with potential visitors, the convention groups, so they can see what Broken Arrow has to offer when they come to our city. At this time, I'd like the Communications Director, Krista Flash, to come forward and tell us a little bit about the video, how it was produced, and then we will actually preview the first of the three videos that we will be using to market our community. Krista?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Krista Flash, Communications Director for the city. In selecting a production company for these films, we really wanted to work with someone who could capture the spirit of Broken Arrow. And fortunately, we were able to find someone right in our own backyard. Retrospect Films is based right here in Broken Arrow. They have a production studio right on Detroit, not too far from our operations building. So Lori Hill and I and Mary McAtee have taken a visit there to preview the first video that was produced, and that's the youth sports video. As the city manager mentioned, they are producing a series of three videos for us. So not only do we have the youth sports video, which that was one of the biggest assets that was identified in the tourism report, was our youth sports tournament. So we definitely wanted to create a video that would attract more teams to Broken Arrow. The second video is going to focus on recruiting people to live in Broken Arrow because, as you know, when you travel to different cities across the US, some cities are so welcoming and the people so friendly that you think, oh, I could see myself living here. When people come to visit Broken Arrow, we want them to leave with that same feeling and consider even possibly moving here, not just being a visitor. The third video, then, will be the main tourism video that can be shown at conferences when we travel to different cities to promote ourselves and market Broken Arrow. These other two videos are not ready. They're still filming and getting interviews, and so we expect to receive that by the end of the month. I'm very pleased with the way the youth sports video turned out. It really did capture the spirit of Broken Arrow. So without further ado, let's go ahead and play it.
Over the years, I've seen Broken Arrow grow from a smaller town to being a nice little city. These complexes here are incredible. You're going to be treated very well at the ballpark, and then, once you get off the ballpark, it's a great city to be around.
I remember playing on these exec fields when I was little. So we come up here quite a bit because it's right down the road for us. It's just three hours south for us.
Great to see the hotels have expanded and everything and have a place for them to stay. You've got to have places that still open late at night so you can eat. And then you've got to have the kids got to be able to do some things in their off-time. They'll do some shopping and everything. It's great for them, so.
There's teams from all over the place coming to Broken Arrow. It's been probably five to six years we've come down here almost every year, and it just seems like it just keeps growing and growing.
I've seen this video now about 10 times, and I still get chills looking at it. I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions to Krista?
And before I go, I should mention that we're going to be sharing this video with as many partner organizations as possible. It'd be on our website, Facebook, YouTube, any other social media channels that we're on. We're also going to be working with the State Tourism Office to get this shown in other cities and in the region as well, and the Green Country Marketing Association. So I'll be working closely with our tourism director to make sure that as many eyeballs see these videos as possible.
Is it something that we could place maybe on the hotel websites? Could we request?
We'll be talking to them as well about that. Yes, absolutely.
That's a good start. Looking forward to seeing the rest of them.
Thank you.
Item eight, we don't have anyone signed up for citizen opportunity to address the council, so we'll go to 9A. Consideration, discussion, and possible recommendations to the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation to issue a request for proposal for economic development feasibility study for New Orleans and Elm corridor. Norm?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Norm Stevens, Economic Development Coordinator for the city. I don't know if you've heard, but yesterday, Applebee's at New Orleans and Elm closed down. That's part of a nationwide effort on their part to close somewhere between 105 and 155 stores. That, along with the relocation of Hobby Lobby and some of the other things throughout the last several years that we've seen out of that corridor. The city manager and I and Wes Smithwick have been talking over the last year about that area and what can be done on our part to help not only identify the issues associated with it, but perhaps find a way, if not only to keep other things from relocating, but to look at what is best for that corridor, to perhaps bring a level of vibrancy to it. I'd like to ask Wes Smithwick with Chamber President to step up and do a short presentation for you, and then I believe the city manager.
I apologize if I'm squeaking. I do think the next city hall we have should have a covered entryway, City Manager, because I'm wet from the waist down, including my shoes. When I first assumed the position I did, I have now, Counselor Lester was actively involved in the Chamber's Retail Committee. And that committee in 2010 was trying to figure out ways to bring people to that particular part of Broken Arrow to shop. I say that because this is not a new problem. This has been an issue that has been unfolding for many, many years. It unfolded, started unfolding long before 2010. About 15 years ago, Kmart closed there. Some of you remember that. There was a Kmart, and it sat empty for many, many years. It wasn't long after that that Albertsons closed that location along with hundreds of others around America. Ace Hardware closed. Then there was a Pottery Barn that came into where Kmart was, and it was there for a few years and closed. Most recently, we saw Hobby Lobby relocate, and today, it was announced that Applebee's was closing that location as part of a nationwide effort. And there's probably going to be more. Each of these closed for store-specific reasons. In particular, Albertsons and Applebee's, as Norm said, are part of large corporate cutback with really no direct ties to 101st Elm. But in the end, stores close because they are not making money or they are not maximizing the internal rate of return required by shareholders or corporate goals. While traffic counts remain strong at that major intersection at around 20,000 cars a day, retail nodes have continued to relocate around not only BA but southeast Tulsa as well. And what is happening at that intersection is not unusual. Locations that are once strong and vibrant become stagnant. 15 years ago, 61st and Memorial was a booming center. If you recall, there was fancy restaurants there, sports complexes, all types of high-end retail, and within a few years, it died on the vine. That happened because of cycling in retail. They moved to newer places or different places because retailers want to be where people are and where people are who spend money. Today's retail reality is not very pretty. We continue to see the decline of the big box. Shopping patterns will continue to change in the coming years, with many predicting that the next big change will be in the grocery business. So what does all of this mean? It means that traditional retail recruitment is not going to work at 101st Elm. Buildings will need investment and repurpose. If you look at the former Kmart and Pottery Barn, you will see a large former building that has been redeveloped into smaller spaces, offices, retail, and indoor storage. Then a new come-and-go built in front of it. The bottom line is, we need help in creating a strategy to breathe new life into this important retail cluster in south Broken Arrow. I don't care how many people you go see at ICSC, how many people you call, how many people you write, how many people you talk about it, that intersection is never going to look like it has 15 years ago. It's going to have to transform into something different. The city manager and I have had a number of discussions about how to do this, and we both believe the best way is to engage a consultant to help us make this happen in the quickest way possible. I believe that if we allow it to redevelop organically, it will take a long, long time, and we will probably continue to see deteriorating centers on the four corners. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
There's really not a whole lot I can add, except for, you've heard me say this, and I'll continue to say this, that I've always believed that it's government's responsibility to help create the environment for the private sector to grow, and that includes the reinvestment or the investment within your community. And I believe that that four corners is at the point where I believe we have responsibility to our citizens that not only live in that area, but all of the community to go in and get some professional assistance to see what could be done. Now, I will say that with the understanding that we plan to go ask the owners of the shopping centers, and there are multiple and several, and speaking to a couple of council members and to Wes, so it's not like there's just, there's four shopping centers, there's four owners. There are many. We're going to go ask them to cost participate with the study that we would, if council authorizes that. They may choose to do so. Some may, some may not. Even if they don't, I still think that it's a wise investment for us to look at the options that would be available to us because we have that responsibility to see if we could come up with some strategies. But in the end, it's going to take a partnership of both the private sector and the public sector, if in fact, those recommendations, whatever they may be, have to be implemented. So I think the first step is to have the council debate the possibility of spending, I would say, right now, the estimate would be less than $100,000. We have vision funds. We have determined through speaking with Tanita and Kirby, who administer the vision funds for the county, that would be an eligible expense, so it would not be something we'd coming out of our capital budget. So we have a funding source. If we get some cost participation, it could be less, and it may not be that much. We haven't had any discussions with the EDC yet. We want to start with the council. And so if the council approves this, then we will have a discussion at the EDC. We will put together the specifications of what we'll be seeking, and then we would go forward. And I would think the process shouldn't take more than a year, maybe less, depending on how much time and effort the consultants or the consultant that we pick would think that it would be necessary. And then we would come back to the EDC and to the city council and present those recommendations to you. It could call for, that area is in a condition that it might qualify for some type of TIF district, and that's what the TIF statutes were created for originally, was to help areas that were in need of redevelopment. The city is in a great position because we have utilities, and so there may be things that we could do if in fact there was an opportunity to redevelop one, two, or three or four of those areas. So this would be the beginning of, I believe, doing our due diligence and taking the responsibility to try to help that area as much as we can. I have been, I drive by that intersection every day to go home and to come to work. And last night on the way home, and as soon as I heard the national news that Applebee's was going to be closing about 100 stores, I was not shocked last night when I drove home and the lights were out at that store. I was deeply saddened because I drive by there twice a day, every day, and see what was really quite a special place not living up to its full potential. And I agree, I think we're going to have to do something to help it. I think if we let it sort of transition on its own, it won't be pretty. It's at least going to take a whole lot longer for it to become something positive. And since I live a mile from there, I guess I have a, besides loving this community, I have a vested interest in seeing it successful. So for my part, I think we have to do something to help guide that and help invest in it so that those folks will feel some hope that they can turn that into something positive again.
You know, as someone who spent a considerable amount, and I don't underestimate a considerable amount of time at that intersection back in 2010, trying to come up with some mechanism to revitalize that area, I've always been for this type of endeavor. And I think, you know, as we've spent money on the north side of the community, and as we'll find here on the 22nd, there's an expectation of the citizens on the south side of the town that expect us as the city to do things to help revitalize and bring new opportunities to south Broken Arrow. And I think this is just the beginning of one of those efforts, and I certainly look forward to see it grow.
You know, I can remember further back than the 15 years ago, that you see the downtown dying, downtown Broken Arrow dying, and it was noted then that, and even in our development process, that that was the future center of the city of Broken Arrow, was that. And I say that with, after seeing the efforts of the city along with the chamber in the downtown. You've mentioned the TIF funds. There's got to be some kind of money involved somewhere, some TIF funds. It's just revitalize the downtown that we just never would have believed 25 years ago to how the transition, how it just has turned around. So I believe with the efforts of the city, working along with the chamber, I really believe we can see that come to pass. It might not be all retail shops, but it could be something that certainly would make that part of town stronger. And I do believe we need to spend more efforts as we go south in Broken Arrow. So it's just downtown is so vibrant and so going now. As I said, years ago, we would never have believed that, and that intersection that we're talking about being so dying on the vine, so to speak. So I certainly am in favor of it also, in connection.
I will say, to Broken Arrow's credit, the Applebee's at 105th and Memorial closed three months ago.
Yeah.
So there you go. At least we lasted a lot longer.
Well, because this is Broken Arrow.
Absolutely. We expect nothing less.
Is there a motion?
If I can figure out what it's supposed to be.
I make a motion to direct the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation to issue a request for proposal for economic development feasibility study for the New Orleans and Elm Place corridor.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9B, consideration, discussion, and possible approval and authorization to execute consent order on case number 17161 from ODEQ. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to visit with one of the attorneys from ODEQ, and thanks to the efforts of Assistant City Manager Kenny Schwab and Anthony Daniel, we were able to complete a project that we believe has met their requirements. We're optimistic that the NOV Notice of a Violation is going to be withdrawn, as will the prepared consent order. Mr. Schwab and I went ahead and placed it on the agenda because this is going to be the only opportunity the council would have to entertain it in the event that DEQ decided to not withdraw it and we needed to move forward. However, they have given me verbal authorization for an extension, and so we plan, I spoke to Mr. Daniel earlier, we're going to get that documentation to them first thing in the morning, so hopefully you won't see this again, but in the interim, I would request that you table it to the next meeting, or just table it generally.
Make a motion to table this matter until it comes on for reconsideration.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of amended application to Tulsa County Vision Authority, well, let's see, I skipped one. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval application to Tulsa County Vision Authority. Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, staff is seeking the city council's approval to submit an application to the Vision Authority for $1,500,000 of Vision 2025 surplus funds to pay for the design and to construct one block of streetscapes on Main Street from Detroit North to Elgin. I believe it's going to be a unique title of Streetscapes 5, and the funding would come from Proposition Number 4. The construction would be concurrent with the construction of the Milestone Capital Development Project. The improvements would be identical or similar to what has occurred previously on Main Street. It is anticipated the project would take about one year to complete. Staff recommends approval of the application. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Would this project start after the project on Main is completed, or?
I believe it's simultaneous, isn't it?
It's concurrent.
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 Because it will take some intercoordination between the private developer and the city.
Don't want to build something and then have it torn up.
We're going to make sure that we avoid that.
Appreciate it.
I make a motion, we approve the submission of the Vision 2025 application.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. 9D, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of an amended application, number two, to Tulsa County Vision Authority. Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. The Streetscapes 4 has been completed, and as you may recall, we submitted an initial application to construct the interactive water feature and had additional funding for Streetscapes improvements. We submitted an amended application back in August of 2016. It's been determined that an additional $409,380 is needed to assist to cover project overruns and work order changes related to the Streetscapes 4. The, earlier tonight, the council did approve the consent, under the consent agenda, the change order for that project, and as a result, the funding would complete that project, and essentially, the project would be completed with vision surplus funds and a $1.3 million bond that was approved in the 2014 capital improvements election. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Russell?
Make a motion to approve the submission of a Vision 2025 amended application, number two.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9E, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of Memorial Park Conceptual Plan. Scott Esmond.
Mayor, council member Scott Esmond, Parks and Recreation Director. I bring to you tonight consideration and possible approval of Memorial Park Conceptual Plan. Councilmember Lester spearheaded an effort to raise money for the acquisition of real property located at 709 Magnolia Court. The property was transferred to the city of Broken Arrow and the deed accepted at the July of the 3rd, 2017 council meeting. As the council's aware, on July of the 22nd, 2015, tragic events unfold at this location. It's proposed that a memorial park be developed to assist first responders in healing from the horrific crimes that they witnessed carried out at this location. Additionally, the development of the memorial park will improve the property for the public enjoyment and assist neighbors in moving beyond memories associated with this property. And the rendering is put up on the board now, and it's the one that was done from the start, hasn't been changed. The rendering of the Memorial Park Conceptual Plan was prepared by Alabac Design Associates and is proposed to include a gazebo, monarch butterfly gardens, and other pollinator plants, evergreen, flowering trees, sidewalks, and security lighting. Staff's requesting approval of Memorial Park Conceptual Plan so that construction plans and specifications can be prepared. We did budget in the FY '18 STCI Fund, Park Capital Fund, excuse me, $140,000 to assist with the construction of this park, but again, due to the efforts of Councilman Lester, many volunteers are coming forward to help construct the park. Part of the designer contract will be to coordinate those volunteers to make the plan go as any other construction plan we would have in the city. So we would actually prepare the plans and specifications, but just not go to bid. We would sit down with them and coordinate that, and Alabac would be involved through the whole process. the whole process. And I will say one other thing, that we have negotiated with Alabac, and if this is approved tonight, we're prepared to enter into contract with him for the design, for the construction plans, and he has donated 20% of his fee to go toward this project. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions of Scott?
Make a motion to approve the Memorial Park conceptual plan.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Thank you, Scott. 9F, consideration discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute engagement letter with Crawford and Associates. Tom Cook.
Mayor, council, with the change of the leadership in the finance department, the city manager has concluded that a best practices review of the finance department is a prudent action for a management team. This is a common practice when there's a change in the leadership of the finance department, especially when there's been a long-term leadership. The city manager's objectives of this review include to identify any potential issues in the way that city business is transacted before a problem develops, determine the effectiveness of the city's internal control policies and procedures, and make any recommendations, identify specific operating policies and procedures that contribute to improve the local government financial management, and make recommendations, and then review the current organizational structure and make any recommendations. Frank Crawford with Crawford CPAs is here, and I believe he would like to explain the process a little further.
I almost didn't get here. I've never driven in rain like what I just experienced on a turner turnpike. It's still mind-boggling, and I've been driving for, well, let's just not go there. I've been driving for a while. Thank you for letting me speak for just a few moments about this review. Literally, we're in a transition period, as Tom has said. Our firm has a history with Broken Arrow in that we were involved all through the 90s, I think, and maybe up through the mid 2000s in assisting finance in various endeavors, especially as it related to audits and financial statements. And then, as they took it over themselves over the last 10 to 12 years, we've not been as much involved. And then, of course, now recently with the change, we've been asked to kind of come back in and do a couple of things. One, assist with the preparation of the annual financial statements for audit, since that was a lot of what Tom Caldwell did. And then, I think that kind of also gives us a little bit of a unique opportunity as while we're doing that, to look over how things are done and compare that to what we see everywhere else. And when I say everywhere else, I'm not just mentioning Oklahoma cities and towns, but what we see nationally, what we see internationally. We deal with governments literally all over the world, as long as they follow US accounting rules, we typically have a hand in them, so we can kind of bring a little bit of uniqueness to the table to show versus what the city's doing now, versus what a lot of others are doing, and what seems to work the best. And so, that's really all the best practice review is. It looks at everything that has a hand or an arm into finance, and then measures that against what we think is the best practice, and then if it's great, we say so, and if it's not great, we make a recommendation to maybe move toward that best practice. And so, it will entertain literally anything that touches finance. So if there's cash involved, if there's utilities involved, if there's court involved, if it involves any finance process at all, including the organization, we'll probably take a look at it and then come back with some report. I would imagine that the best time to do this is probably now, within the next several months, as we're probably already in place, working with the preparation of the financial statements. So I think it'll probably coordinate timing-wise very well with already being involved. So that's really it. I was here to just answer any questions if you might have any in particular. The engagement letter is very broad, because it allows us to kind of look at really where we think we need to look at within the finance area. So I didn't go too specific with it, simply because I wanted to have the ability to kind of look at several things without pinning ourselves down in one particular area, so.
How long do you anticipate?
You know, I would imagine that it's probably going to be a couple-month process. By the time that we get in, we'll conduct a series of interviews, we'll have flow charts that we'll fill out about how the process, different processes within finance evolves. And then, I'd like to go back to the office, I'd like to brainstorm a little bit with everyone, and then have some time to write a report. So I would say we're probably a couple-months process, and that that couple months ought to fall between now and, say, the end of the calendar year. So I can't give you a specific time of when we'll be back to present, but I mean, I know that once that process begins, that it probably takes a good two months to do it and do it correctly. So I would say you'll be hearing from us again sometime before the end of the calendar year, but maybe before that, so.
Vice Mayor, I wanted to tell you, my plan is to complete the recruitment for a new finance director by the end of the year, and so that one of the goals was to, is to have these recommendations ready to go, so once the new finance director is named, it's really going to be helpful for them to have what I would just call a roadmap. I mean, I think, you know, honestly, we do the audit every year, we're required to do so, and you've seen the results of that audit, and we're in good shape. It's just another opportunity to take a look at some, like you said, best practices. We have a lot of new employees within finance, and I think this would be very helpful to them as well.
Any questions of Mr. Crawford?
Make a motion to approve and authorize the city manager or his assistants to execute an engagement letter with Crawford and Associates PC to conduct a best practices review of the city of Broken Arrow Finance Department.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be saying again soon.
Drive home, it'll be a little drier, we hope. Okay, we have item 9G, consideration discussion, possible approval of and authorization to execute master lease agreement between New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business at AT&amp;T Mobility, and the city of Broken Arrow. Beth Ann?
I believe that we finally have an agreement, and so we are actually going to ask you to take action on it. In the past, we have attached the draft agreements to this, and in this particular case, this is reflective of the actual agreement that's before you absent the attachments, which we will get on prior to execution. Very basically, what it does is it enables this particular company, AT&amp;T, to utilize city facilities, and specifically, light poles and traffic control poles for small cell facilities. Now, in order to utilize the small cell technology, they're going to have to have access to fiber, they're also going to have to have access to electricity. So it was pretty important to the city manager and to staff as well, that we were very thoughtful with regard to placement of these particular facilities, and make sure that there are certain protections in the contracts, which would allow us to require the removal should it be required for public safety. One thing that the city manager was very vigilant about, which I think the council should recognize, is the fact that we were able to negotiate a rate of $250 a month. Now, we don't know that there are going to be more than five facilities initially, but it was kind of interesting, because not too long ago, we both had the opportunity to review a presentation by AMLA, and they talked about the compounding money that was paid by a lot of cell tower companies and for placement of antennas. And kind of the standard MO is to have them approve an increase every five years. And so, we took a look at some data that seemed to indicate, well, not seemed to, it actually indicated that cities were losing a lot of money by waiting every five years to actually realize that increase. And so, he stood fairly firm on the issue of requiring a 3% increase every year. Like I said, the agreement is quite extensive, it also addressed application fees, gives us the opportunity to be very selective in where the particular facilities are going to be located, because the technology is still evolving a little bit, and so it may, you know, depending on the structure itself, we may have to make certain modifications, and of course, the safety to the public is first and foremost. Basically, how this will work is it will be in effect for a period of 20 years, and as AT&amp;T decides to locate their small cell facilities, what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll complete a supplemental application, staff will do a review of it, we'll review construction plans, and make sure everything is as it should be. One of the advantages to having outside counsel in this particular case, although it did represent an expense, yet it was very important, I think, because this particular agreement will now serve as a template for the remainder of the state. So not only is Broken Arrow a leader in terms of making this phenomenal service available to its citizens, staff and the city manager in particular was also very thoughtful about the importance of making sure that we had adequate protections for the city, for the city council and city employees, and also ensuring that we were thoughtful in terms of being able to recoup our own expenses up to and including electricity, because that's something that, you know, most cities wouldn't necessarily think about, but that typically would reflect an expense. So anyway, I'm very pleased that this is on for your consideration this evening. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Beth Ann?
I make a motion, we approve the master lease agreement and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Udi, excuse me. Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. And thank you, Beth Ann. I know you've spent a lot of work on this, trying to get this done, it's been a long time coming.
Let me just add this, Mayor. It did take a while, but I think the thoughtfulness was necessary, because Cox Communication has had interest in doing this as well as several of the other telecommunications providers, and by basically, we have cleared the underbrush, so things can grow. We have a very good document that I think protects us, at the same time allows them to expand their network, so I'm very pleased with this. I'm also pleased that the representative for AT&amp;T is also a leader in our community in the chamber, so it's good to have a partnership with those people that live in Broken Arrow. So I'd just like to thank Mike Cooper and his team for bringing this to us, for the opportunity to put it in place, and I want to thank you for your support.
In reading the contract, it made me long for the days when you could do all business on one eight-by-ten piece of paper. But it's further along contract.
Well, thank you. We'll go to 9H, consideration discussion and possible award of the lowest responsible bid to Cherokee Park Construction, approve and authorize the execution of construction contract for the Rose West Dog Park. Alex Mills?
Alex Mills, Director of Engineering and Construction, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm very happy to bring this project to you. It's been on the drawing board for quite a while, and happy to get it off high-dead center. This was part of the 2014 general obligation bond, and it is located, I've got just a couple brief slides for you, I think you've seen these generally before, but it's located generally just east of Garnett on New Orleans, kind of tucked right back into the highway there. The bond called for both a restroom facility and a dog park. This is a couple renderings of the restroom facility, it's very low maintenance. It's elevated, because that area's in a floodplain, and we had to get the finished floor above the hundred-year floodplain elevation.
Is that for the humans?
That is for the humans, yes. The rest of the facility is the restroom area for the dogs. And so...
And it's not elevated?
It's not elevated, no. But we have lots of nice green grass out there for them to have their enjoyment. These are a couple pictures of the master plan that was presented, the engineering documents, although have tweaked just slightly due to development services review, but look substantially like this. We bid the project on June 28th and July 5th, bids were open August 1st. The bid, low bid, was for $532,750. That was on an engineer's estimate of about $723,000, so it came in below estimate, and we are recommending award to Cherokee Pride Construction in that amount, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Alex?
I don't know who's any more excited about this, the people in Tulsa, the people in Broken Arrow, because we use Hunter Park quite a bit, our residents do, and so I know a lot of folks that are very excited about this, because of how cool it's going to be, and the fact that now you have two state-of-the-art dog parks in the south part of our county, so I'm very excited about this.
I'm excited that it came in $200,000 underneath the financing.
I'm excited about the restroom, as I ride that bike trail, it's a nice little restroom there.
I'd make a motion to award the lowest responsible bid to Cherokee Pride Construction and approve and authorize the execution of the construction contract.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9I, consideration and possible approval, resolution number 1037, manual fees. Tom Cook?
Mayor, council, resolution number 1037 is really the final step in this process. It is approving the manual fees that we had the work session on, on the August 1st. The document is essentially unchanged from that work session. There were a couple of items. On the first page, there was the one item that we removed to be implemented later, and then there was a little bit of language on one of the licenses. It was actually in there at five, and we changed it back to three on recommendation from Beth Ann. And so, this would be the final step in setting the fees to be effective October 1st for the remainder of this fiscal year and the beginning of the next. This, as a reminder, these fees do implement round two of the utility rate increases as budgeted, and also includes the streetlight fee, which allowed for the extra crew for the signal technicians. I or any of my fellow department directors would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Tom or staff?
Make a motion to approve resolution 1037 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9J, consideration discussion and possible approval of resolution number 1048. The resolution authorizes the city attorney to enter into a final journey, general entry of judgment without admitting liability in the matter of application of Aspirant Corner LLC for a decree vacating a portion of plot of south town estates. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This is a little bit unusual, because typically you don't see vacation actions on plots, but staff's worked pretty diligently, I think, to ensure that this is being done in compliance with Oklahoma State statutes. Essentially, what's happening is it's going to be elimination of the utility easements in a certain area of it. There are other utility, there's access to other utilities in this particular area that staff is very comfortable will sufficiently address all the needs for this particular development. This gives us the ability to permanently foreclose this, and we'll create a very clean record with land records. We would request that you approve resolution 1048 and authorize its execution.
Make a motion, we approve resolution number 1048.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9K, consideration discussion and possible approval of resolution 1049. The resolution authorizes the attorney to deposit $9,000 with Grand County Court clerk in the matter of H&amp;G paving contractors versus Ballard TP Construction LLC. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This is also just a little bit unusual. We basically have a dispute with regard to payment, and so Trevor Dennis, who is our chief deputy, he worked diligently with Engineering and Construction in the finance department to try to find a way to get this resolved. And essentially, there's $9,000 that we believe may or may not be at issue, so what we are electing to do and recommending that you do is actually allow the deposit of the dispute amount into court. Now, whenever we pay money into court, we have to pay what's called poundage, and typically it's based on a percentage, not to exceed $300, but in this particular case, we think that it's sort of like our opportunity to be Switzerland, and we stick it in there and forget it, so, and then allow the court to move forward with it. But my thanks to Engineering and Construction for being so willing to handle it in this particular way, instead of hanging up the money and finance, so we would request that you approve resolution 1049 and authorize its execution.
Any questions of Beth Ann?
particular way instead of hanging up the money and finance. So we would request that you approve resolution 1049 and authorize its execution.
Any questions about that?
Why would you succor? This is an elegant solution to allow us to stay out of the middle of two fighting parties. I'd make a motion to approve resolution number 1049.
Second?
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9L, consideration discussion of possible appointment of a member of the City Council to Broken Arrow Downtown Advisory Board.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Ordinance 2-230 provides for one Broken Arrow City Council member to be appointed as a member of the Downtown Advisory Board for a term of four years. The appointment will fill the position number one, which is currently filled by Vice Mayor Scott Udi. Position number one shall be an appointment by the mayor and will expire October 1st, 2021.
So I guess I need to make an appointment. I would recommend Johnny Parks.
Second?
My third.
Mike is always fair. He knows I moved out of the way when he started looking.
It's easier when you're not at the meeting, Johnny.
Quickly, before we have any further discussion, I'd make a motion to appoint Johnny Parks to the Broken Arrow Downtown Advisory Board.
And I hastily second it.
Motion second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Abstain.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Notice that abstain means no.
I know that. So it wasn't unanimous.
Funny how that works.
Item 9M, consideration discussion of possible approval of request by Representative of Broken Arrow, Keep Broken Arrow Beautiful, to identify Broken Arrow as a city where roses bloom. Jennifer Hooks.
Hello, Jennifer Hooks, Executive Assistant. This is a follow-up request from the March 7th meeting when Representatives of Keep Broken Arrow Beautiful requested approval from the City Council for a phrase to identify Broken Arrow as the City of Roses. And so staff did some research on this particular phrase and later recommended that an alternate phrase was chosen. So KBAB chose another phrase, and tonight they are asking council if they would approve this new phrase to identify Broken Arrow as the City where roses bloom. And Bethan may have some comments.
We maintained a relationship with the original trademark firm that handled the city Broken Arrow, and so our thanks to them, and they are Johnny on the spot in terms of, within a very few minutes of us being provided the information, we were able to verify through the firm. So, you know, once again, money was spent to verify that this phrase is available.
Any questions?
Okay, and we do have people signed up to speak. Beverly Forster and Clarence Oliver. And also Brandon Murphy, everyone's going to come down, so we'll just have you guys speak.
Mayor Thurman, lady and gentlemen of the council and city manager Spurgeon and staff members around the area. Sixty-two years ago, when I moved my young family to Broken Arrow, increasing the population from 3,000 to 3,004, I fell in love with a community that I had not even known existed a few weeks before. And that was our first trip, when we drove into town to sign a contract. And I fell in love with Broken Arrow and said, this is where we're supposed to be living. As I drove around the town and was out in an area that is now well-developed, but at that time was in the area about where the city water park, swimming pool is located and across the street is Veterans Park. And that was a rural area. And until a few months previously, that had been the part of State Highway 51 that ran down Main Street to 101st Street and then to Kawida, and that had just been relocated. As I drove in that area, I saw a sign that said, "Welcome to Broken Arrow, City of Roses and Sparkling Spring Water." It was located about where Veterans Park is located, that was the south edge of town. And I learned that, I knew that Highway 51 had just been relocated and extended east on 71st Street and then angled off toward Kawida. And I was told that a similar sign had existed on the north end of Main Street, and probably in the, all the construction work of moving and creating a new highway, that was tossed in the trash somewhere. Sometime later, the sign that was on South Main has disappeared. But I learned the history of that logo. When I met the next week, a gentleman who had just finished research on writing the history of the naming and development of Broken Arrow, we became great friends and I embraced the history of this community. And as some of you know, since then, I've been preaching that, and I've always been calling Broken Arrow the City of Roses and Sparkling Spring Water, because up until about that time, that sparkling spring water, the chinny springs, the beautiful waters, as the Indians called them, was the water source for Broken Arrow. So it was very appropriate to call it the City of Roses and Sparkling Spring Water. The roses went back into early history, and that theme had been adopted in the early twenties and had remained, not in any official capacity. And obviously, none of us had taken the time to even investigate such things as trademarking something for a city. We didn't think about those things. But during the years after that, the various committees began to think of ways, how do we promote Broken Arrow? What kind of a theme can we use? We were aware that our nation had a motto that was based on, in history, wording not identical, but the wording came out of the Declaration of Independence and also was in the fourth verse of the Star Spangled Banner. If you will read that fourth verse, that we rarely sing, but it's in there. So we have retained at our nation level that kind of a history. We need to retain in Broken Arrow a history that goes back to that time. When our Centennial Planning Committee was working in the, in the two years prior to the time that we celebrated our 100th year, they thought of all kinds of ideas, including coming back to trying to promote the City of Roses and Sparkling Spring Water. We even talked about bottling water out of the two springs that are still open to the public that bore the chinny type water supply. Bottling that and marketing it and selling it with a red rose on the outside of the bottle and the logo, City of Roses, Sparkling Spring Water. Health Department didn't think very much of that. And there were a number of other problems, so that idea was dropped, but people were thinking that, and they have continued to think that. And the interest in doing that led eventually to the formation of this group that will continue speaking here in a moment, the Bring Back the Roses Committee, that has had some influence, even in encouraging the history of roses, ended up to some degree being named in the naming of the Rose District. But we continue to search for a motto that can be used. And as you well know from Beth's comments, we, the city learned very quickly that City of Roses has been claimed legally by another city, a major city that trademarked it. So it was essential that a new logo be proposed. In my, working with people who are developing mission statements and theme ideas, we've always tried to tell them that any logo, any theme, any tagline, as they're now being called in marketing, should meet the 3M test. It should be meaningful, it should be memorable, and should be measurable. The proposal that we have means something. It has a true meaning of what it is that we're thinking about in this city and what are we emphasizing. It's short and it can be memorized. Everyone can repeat it, they know what our theme will be, our tagline will be, and they can repeat it anyplace they go, a little shorter than the City of Roses and Sparkling Spring Water. And lastly, it's measurable. If the roses bloom, you've met your, you've met the goal, you've met your mission, and you can measure it because they are the roses up and down the district, Rose District area. I'm speaking, obviously, in support of the proposal, and I encourage you to give favorable consideration to it. Thank you.
I also want to speak in favor of this tagline. I've been working for seven years with the Bring Back the Roses movement to bring us back to the City of Roses, only to find out that, of course, Portland, Oregon took that treasured name. And so we move on to something that will be appropriate to us. We've looked through a lot of different names and ideas, and we've chosen Where Roses Bloom because it's so visual. When you think of the City of Roses, what comes to your mind? I don't know, buildings, I don't know roses, but when you say Where Roses Bloom, you can see growth, you can see bushes with flowers, you can smell fragrance, you can see beauty. And that's what our city represents right now. We have listened to the exciting things all night long about what's happening here, the wonderful videos by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the new exciting buildings and new plantings that will be going on on north side of the town. We truly believe that the term Where Roses Bloom should be the representative wording for our city. I think it shows to everyone, to the world, who we are now, the excitement and the beauty here. And I hope that you will choose to use that as our tagline. Thank you. And now Brandon's going to speak.
Mayor, Council? Nice to see you guys. I think that's probably the toughest act to follow with these two. I just want to speak from a business perspective. We got behind this project, when I say project, just the idea of the rose garden being built here in Broken Arrow. And I think it started out really just to show honor to the Nelson family, and my involvement in this is I'm the managing partner of Nelson Nissan here in Broken Arrow, Nelson Mazda in Tulsa, and then now in Norman. And what we've seen, just as being a part of this, is that it's evolved into a lot of interest, even outside of just wanting to show honor to the Nelson family. We've seen that by having some identification with doing business in Broken Arrow, it really brings a level of focus that I believe that we need as business owners here in the city. And I think it first hit me, in fact, I was excited to see that we're using retrospect films. That's who we spend quite a bit with on an annual basis. They do a phenomenal job of telling stories, and I think that's really what this does, is it tells a story more than it does anything else. And when you have a unique value proposition, it really separates you. And we know this really well because we're in a really competitive business, and we tagged our business with We'll Make a Believer Out of You years ago, and it stuck. And we still have kids that sing the song that we, I haven't played it in a while, but for some reason, people still remember it. And I think that's really the value of doing what we're proposing today, is that it makes it more about what Broken Arrow is evolving into, which is a beautiful community, and less just about the name Broken Arrow. And so that's why we're in support of this. We feel like, from a business perspective, that it really does bring a level of recognition. We've begun to tag everything within Broken Arrow. And to have one extra thing as a business owner, it really, to us, again, it separates us from Tulsa, or Sand Springs, or Owasso, or any of the other communities. I think it's that little edge that will also help us in branding ourselves and businesses in Broken Arrow. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I think, and the concept here was, I had the opportunity to sit in a meeting with the city manager and KBAB and the Bring Back the Roses Committee some months ago when this first started discussion, and the thought was finding another way to capitalize on what we've done with roses in our community. And I don't think the concept here is, you know, we are Broken Arrow, where opportunity lives, and that stays. But to be able to have an identifying phrase that ties in and is one that the city encourages use of and adopts as part of, as another phrase that allows us to add to our marketing regimen, so to speak. And I think that's the concept here. And I support that because I think we've done such a wonderful job with developing the Rose District and tying so much of what we do to roses, and especially with the history lesson that I always enjoy from Dr. Oliver, my dear friend, and I'm so glad he was able to address that today. I think that this is just another phrase and another piece to the marketing tool that would be a benefit to us and to Broken Arrow as a whole. I know as the council directs, so I'm not entirely certain exactly what the motion would need to say, but there may be other thoughts on this matter.
Well, I would make a motion that we accept the committee's recommendation of the, accepting the City where roses bloom.
And I would second that.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, item 10, preview ordinances, there are none. Item 11, ordinances, 11A, consideration discussion of possible approval or adoption of ordinance number 3497. Bethan?
Well, we're really hoping that the third time will be the charm on this particular ordinance. It's been before three separate, actually four separate occasions, so we're putting it straight on. I felt like it was important to change the ordinance number this time since we had adopted it as corrected, and so title company tells us we're right. Well, I guess we'll see. If you notice it on the agenda next time, then you'll know it was wrong again. Otherwise, we would request that you adopt ordinance number 3497, and then by separate mission, approve the emergency clause.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 3497.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, item 12, remarks and inquiries by governing body members, or any remarks or inquiries? Seeing none, we'll go to item 13, remarks and updates by city manager. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening again. Just a few items. First, just a reminder that next Tuesday, the 22nd, the City Council will have a special meeting regarding economic development opportunities in South Broken Arrow. We are sending out press releases and using all of our various medias to promote folks coming out to the special meeting. The council has also invited the EDC and several of their members, if not a majority of them, will be at that meeting as well. The format for the meeting is going to be, obviously, it is a special meeting, so the council will call the meeting to order, and I'm sure you may have some opening remarks. It is Vice Mayor Udi's ward, so therefore, he's spoken to the mayor about welcoming the folks to his ward. And then the format's going to be, I'll have a few opening remarks, and I will introduce the staff members. And what we plan to do as a preview for the council is, it will be a series of presentations because we want to make sure the residents have all the information available to them. So we will start off with the presentation from Kenny Schwab, the Assistant City Manager for Operations. We'll talk about the infrastructure improvements that the city has made over the last few years to prepare the area for development. And then Development Services Director, Michael Skates, is going to give a brief PowerPoint on the development that has taken place in the last couple of years within the development, and more importantly, what developments have been approved for the area, mainly the residential in the southwest part of the community. And then Norm Stevens and Wes Smithwick are going to come in to talk about our economic development recruitment efforts, on who we're talking to, what type of feedback we're getting, what challenges exist for individuals to make private investments. You heard a little bit from Wes tonight about internal rate of return, so I think you'll hear something about that. We also have invited, and he has confirmed, the developer of the shops at Askin Creek. He will be there to speak, to address the development and his efforts to bring businesses to the development, and then we are going to open it up for questions. We are going to tape the meeting. We have the equipment that we approved in the capital improvement budget to tape the meeting. We are going to get some assistance from the company that we purchased the equipment from, but we will televise, we will tape the meeting, and then we will run it on Cox Channel 24 and then make it available through our website. So folks that could not attend, because Krista Flash and I have had several people contact us and wanted to know if it was going to be televised because they are interested but could not make it because of previous commitment. So looking forward to that meeting, and we're hoping that, you know, we have a full house next Tuesday night to educate folks on what the council has done. We're also going to talk about traffic counts, we're going to talk about investments in the north part of Broken Arrow, and what that has resulted in, as well as the investments that the council has made and is planning to make in order to promote development. So it could be a very interesting meeting. I'm sure there, as we all know, there's a lot of folks are very concerned about what's going on, and hopefully this will help them understand what we've done and what we're hoping will happen as a result of the things we've done. Next, I wanted to mention that Cox, in partnership with the city, is going to offer the free concert again on... going on, and hopefully, this will help, help them understand what we've done, and what we're hoping will happen as a result of the things we've done. Next, I wanted to mention that Cox, in partnership with the city, is offered, gonna offer the free concert again on September twenty-second, the community concert that they offered last year. That is a Friday. We checked the high school football schedule this year, so there's not gonna be any conflicts with, with the home game. So I think turnout last year was really great. I think it's gonna be even better this year. They've got some great acts. The tickets are free, and they can pick those up at the, at the local offices in Tulsa, as well as Broken Arrow. They're just asking you to bring in a donation to the event, for every ticket that will be donated to Broken Arrow neighbors. So I think it's, it's a great community event for all of us. The next things I wanted to mention, at, at the September fifth meeting, the council is going to have before them a contract with a public relations firm to begin the process of helping the city with, first and foremost, conducting surveys to get the pulse on the community about the twenty-eighteen general bond obligation projects. So, we are going to pick a firm, and as part of that firm, there is a subcontractor that will be doing the surveying. And so we're gonna get the questions together, and we're going to spend the next three to four months engaging the community on what type of quality of life projects, transportation projects, stormwater, parks and recreation, city facilities to, to get their input on the package. And as council knows, for the last two and a half months now, the staff has been, been running a concurrent track to where we're starting to pare down the projects that we want to present to you. And we'll plan to do that, once we have all the information about the community and the staff. And at some point, you all will decide how those two will merge. And so, so I'm looking at probably in January, we'll have that discussion. The, the council has to call for the election, I believe, at least sixty days in advance of whatever it is, date it is in August, which I think you'll be able to do that sooner. And then we will actually begin the public education. So we'll have a project scheduled working backwards, probably later this fall, once we have the citizens' input. And so we'll make sure the council members are aware of the questions, and make sure that you have input on, on those questions as well. And I, I truly believe that based on all the feedback I've received from you, from the citizens, and what the staff has presented, there's gonna be a lot of marrying up of, of what the community would like to see in this next bond package. The question becomes, how large of a package do we want to submit before the voters? Because as you all know, if it's not in there, we really don't have the money to afford it. Because these are not, these are not projects that are fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. Road widens from two to five lanes is, is four to five million dollars. Park, park improvements can, can range anywhere from fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars. Turping a field, as we know, is about six hundred thousand dollars. Those are the type of improvements that the residents would like to see. And so we need to, the biggest challenge council's gonna have is figuring out how to pair all the requests into a workable package over the next five, six, maybe even ten years. So I think it's gonna be a very exciting time, but we wanted to start making sure that the public knows their input is gonna drive this, gonna drive this package, hopefully right, right to, you know, their support next, next August. With regard to that, I want to let you know, because you may get approached, is that a couple of weeks ago, at the request of both Councilman Lesser and Vice Mayor Udi, we met with the senior council. And Councilman Lester was there, because they are interested in having the city conclude something in the bond proposition next August. And I wanted you to know that I tasked them to go back in the next thirty days, and come up with some recommendations that will be included in the initial package. I did not commit to them that it would make the final cut, that's your, that's your, that's your responsibility. But I did tell them that, you know, the council members are all very favorable to our seniors, and that building has essentially reached capacity in many respects. And so they're gonna be looking at some recommendations, so they may approach you to let you know that they're actually looking at those. So probably sometime in September, we'll have those, and then we'll include those in the package that comes before you. The, the next thing I wanted to mention, I'm, the Purple Heart Ceremony that we had a week ago tonight, I know the mayor was out of town for a committee that he serves on the national board. I know he would have been here. The other council members, thank you very much for, for attending. Thanks for filling in, Vice Mayor. I'm so proud of the fact that we are now Purple Heart City. The mayor mentioned to me about possibly painting the Purple Heart on the parking spaces. I saw that on social media the other night, so we're gonna look into that. We had about two-hundred-and-twenty-five folks from the community, I would say. Dr. Oliver was the emcee, did a great job. We also had some other speakers, and it was a very moving ceremony from everyone who was there. And I just want to thank the council for their support. So now we join that elite group of folks to say that we're honoring those veterans that were wounded, and, and, and lost as a result of their service to this country. So I just want to say thank you. And the final thing I want to mention is, through the Conference of Mayors, on behalf of the city, I applied for an opportunity to participate in the Bloomberg philanthropies, which is a foundation through Michael Bloomberg that allows cities to receive grant funding to help them with trying to address a idea, situation, or an opportunity, or problem within their community. And we are having, we were selected in one of thirty-five cities around the country that actually made the cut, the first round, to move forward. And our facilitator will be here Thursday for a eight-hour work session. And we've identified two areas as potential opportunities. One of them is workforce development, because I, I, speaking with our EDC, as long to a lot of manufacturers, is there is a concern about the baby boomers basically retiring out of the workforce. And we need to make sure that, being the third-largest manufacturer in maintaining that, is that we need to make sure we maintain a qualified workforce. We're looking at an innovation district over the next decade or so. We need to make sure that we have qualified workers for, for those businesses that have made this investment. And the other opportunity that we may consider, we'll be looking at how we could expand our travel and tourism opportunities with, within the City of Broken Arrow. If you look at how the hotels we have, how, how dominant we are in youth sports, and the facilities we have, Scott Isman's talked long about the need for a public-private partnership for soccer, lacrosse, volleyball. You all get hit up about the fact there just isn't enough space in our facilities. And so there could be an opportunity to look at travel and tourism, as well as trying some public-private partnerships in that regard. So, we're gonna look at that, and hopefully, we will put an application that's worthy enough to receive some grant funding. If not, we will, it'll certainly be a benchmark that we can use, because whether we get funding or not, we're gonna come up with some strategies that will help us address either one of those that's selected. So, I'll keep the council posted on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. We do have executive session, so I would entertain a, a motion to go into Bama Beta and BATE.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
And Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority Meeting to Order. Let's see, what's next? Yes, Municipal Authority Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Are there any items to be moved from the consent agenda?
Move for approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. General Authority Business, consideration discussion, possible approval of memorandum of understanding between Broken Arrow Municipal Authority and Tulsa Authority for the Recovery of Energy. Please.
Good evening, chairman, authority members. I'm very pleased to bring this item to you tonight, as it represents another opportunity for our residents to dispose their green waste free of charge. Back in June, we approached the city of Tulsa to see if they'd be interested in partnering with us to offer the same green waste services to our Broken Arrow residents as they do to their Tulsa residents. A result of that meeting is the memorandum of understanding before you tonight. It's actually between TARE, the Tulsa Authority for the Recovery of Energy, and the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority. Basically, it provides for Broken Arrow residents to use Tulsa's site, just as Tulsa residents do. Tulsa will also check the ID or the residential requirements of residents, the same as their residents, and they will keep track, the amount of use of, of the site by Broken Arrow residents, and send us a monthly bill to pay for that service. Additionally, I want to make note that this is for our Broken Arrow refuse customers and residents, and is not extended to commercial businesses. Now, it already been before the TARE Board, and they have approved that back in July twenty-fifth, and it's now before you tonight, for your consideration and authorization execution of the memorandum of understanding. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Lee?
What can be taken to their facility?
Green waste, you can take limbs, leaves, trees, grass, things of that nature, just green.
Small limbs?
You can. Mm-hmm. What they won't take are the big root balls with, with dirt on them, either from, from brush or trees.
Okay.
Now, we are gonna put out, Krista's working in conjunction with Tulsa to do a joint press release, that's gonna explain all the ins and outs of Broken Arrow residents being able to use that site. We'll put it on our website, and TV, and other places, and try to get the word out to as many people as possible, because that is a good benefit for them. And we also avoid the fees, tipping fees, if we take it ourselves, and have to, to dump it at the landfill, or, or at the, the burn plant.
Any more questions?
Make a motion to approve and execute the memorandum of understanding with TARE.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. There's no executive session, so entertain one more motion.
Make a motion with adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. There's one item on the consent agenda. Anyone need to remove it?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. No General Authority Business, no executive session.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Arrow Industrial Trust to meet, to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Yeah, here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. There is one item on the agenda, on the consent agenda. Does anyone need to remove it?
Remove to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
I was just gonna comment, I really had to look again and see what bait was. You know, as a fisherman, I thought, man, what am I reading here?
Well, we do have, we have no presentations, no General Authority Business. Need another motion?
Make a motion with adjourn, bait.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We are back in regular session. I'd entertain a motion to go into a brief recess to clear the room for executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.